Test audio, test audio. This is a test of the emergency broadcast system. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call. This is only a test. This is not an emergency call.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and members of the council. Before you this evening, we have a presentation from our San Mateo area chamber. And we have Erica Wood, our from the chamber. She's going to be presenting to you the upcoming work plan for this next year. She's going to give you an overview and the highlights from the past year. And the same for the upcoming year with some things to expect and look forward to. With that, I will hand it off to Erica.
Great, thank you so much, Christina. Good evening, Mayor Newsom, council members and city staff. Really delighted to be here this evening to provide this update. And I am joined by my colleague Pauline Chung. Before I dive in, I first just wanted to extend a heartfelt thank you to all of you. The city has been a vital partner, steadfast supporter and a champion of the chamber's mission. And we deeply value the support. And we don't take it for granted. So I want you all to know that we are committed to continually earning your trust and demonstrating the impact of our work for you and for the broader community we serve. Okay, we can go to the next. So the first highlight that I wanted to share is how we're building member momentum. I'm really proud that we are an organization that is 350 members strong and growing. And one of our top priorities is meaningful member engagement. And one of the ways that we do that is through our business referral network groups. These are organized groups of professionals representing a diverse range of industries and business owners who meet regularly. One group, in fact, meets weekly. And the whole idea is for them to build trust and rapport with one another so that they then can exchange qualified referrals, leading to real opportunities for growth and support. Some of the other benefits that come with being part of these networking groups include gaining public speaking skills, visibility and promotion, plus personal and professional development. And it's all within a community of like minded professionals. So really a source of peer support, which is great. So that brings us to Carmen Avila, who you see on the screen before you. She credits over 221,000 in closed business to our BRN referrals. And I think it's just a fantastic example of support for local businesses and support for our local economy here in San Mateo. So beyond membership and serving members, which is a core part of what we do, there are also broader roles that we play to really drive economic vitality and support the quality of life in San Mateo. And one of those, of course, is working to energize our downtown and really making San Mateo a destination. So tonight, I'm pleased to share that you get two September Fest updates, the 2024 update and then what just happened a little over a week ago. So speaking to last year, we know we drew over 5,000 attendees. That's based on cell phone data, making it one of the most well attended events of any event downtown. And this takes place at a time when we're also seeing other festivals in the region, whether it's Fog Fest or Oktoberfest in Redwood City. So we're really happy with that foot traffic. Of course, the event wouldn't be possible without the incredible partnership of the city across many departments, city leadership, city manager's office, our amazing downtown San Mateo Association. And for the first time last year, we added a new partner, which was the County of San Mateo's Office of Arts and Culture. And we did that to really uplift local artists and celebrate the, you know, incredible creativity and diversity that we have in the city and in the county. In addition to September Fest, a couple of other things I'll note in terms of downtown activation is that we are a regular member of the Rev Up Downtown Committee. And the chamber was also pleased to co-lead efforts to create and launch a downtown survey last year with over 1,300 respondents, which was amazing. And we're proud to be a sponsor of the local farmer's market happening downtown and supporting local providers of food and creating places for community to gather. So after September Fest, no rest for the weary. We headed straight into election season. And through our Public Policy and Government Affairs Committee, we hosted a candidate forum. This was in September, really giving businesses and community residents an opportunity to hear from individuals running for elected office. And of course, two of those are here, serving on our wonderful city council. And I have said before, and I'll say again, engaging in the public policy process thoughtfully strategically, I think, is one of the most powerful tools for change that we have. So we, we really take that role seriously. We were proud to endorse Measure T and supporting the city in its efforts to get to that 7,015 new units of housing goal, which of course is a vital step in addressing our affordable challenges and making sure we have the housing for our workforce. We're also pleased to say that we supported Measure CC. And that, of course, was an important new revenue source for the city and pleased to see that coming into fruition for the 2526 budget. And then after election season, we were excited to launch Lead Forward in the first quarter of 2025. I think the council knows that leadership development and civic engagement has had a long history with our chamber. And we really do see investing in people as critical to our mission of supporting a vibrant economy and a connected resilient community. So we've had a program in place for over 30 years. And we've had a long format program. And we've seen that empower professionals to grow, to connect, and then figure out how they can lead change in ways that are important to them. But we asked ourselves, coming out of COVID and seeing more and more pressures on people and their time, what if we could deliver on those same goals and those same impacts, but in less time? And that reflection really led us to look at some best practices around leadership development, different formats, what different programs in our county were doing to come up with this reimagined immersive three day experience in a beautiful setting. What we hoped participants would gain is an expanded professional network with professionals across sectors, a refreshed leadership vision and stronger leadership skills, and that they importantly would be energized about ways that they could make an impact and positively shape the future of their communities. We're really proud to share that our results exceeded expectations. We did a post-program evaluation and we saw consistently high marks across all of the key indicators that we were really paying attention to. And I'll just read some of the data points. 95% of participants in the retreat said it was very effective in helping them build their network and new connections. 91% said it was very effective in helping them strengthen their leadership skills. 100%, everybody said it was very effective in inspiring them about ways they could make a difference. And most notably, when we asked them, would you recommend this experience to a friend or colleague, 100% said yes. So a real powerful endorsement of impact. You'll also see a few quotes on the right hand side, giving you a better sense of what people took away from the experience personally and professionally. They commented on the location. We did an exercise called Hero Hardship and Highlight, a three minute, four minute story that everybody had to share. That was a way we really built connections. Loved meeting leaders in my community and the opportunities for partnership and growth. I left with tangible skills and it ignited my passion for becoming more involved. So we're pretty happy with those results. Okay, and then wrapping up the fiscal year, we had our Best of San Mateo Area Campaign and Award Celebration. This was the second annual campaign and award celebration. And I'll just remind council that this just, the event and campaign isn't about, just about recognizing business excellence. It's also really involving community in the process of telling us which businesses they support and why. We were thrilled to see over 40,000 votes cast in this second round, which was more than double the year before. So really a nice indicator of growing engagement and enthusiasm. And we have between 250 and 320 visitors to our Best of San Mateo Area website daily. So people are looking at who are those great businesses that I should know about and patronize. We'll be launching our digital magazine. That will have an anticipated reach of 20,000. So a way to keep the drumbeat going and the momentum and sharing, you know, great local businesses and building community pride. And then the winners, they receive this custom digital badge. And it has been so fun to see the creative ways those badges are put to use. And just when we thought we had seen everything, lo and behold, a badge appeared on the bus wrap of Galen Frye Fitting and Frangos. They were voted best law firm. And they surprised us by incorporating the badge on the bus wrap. So great enthusiasm out there. So then turning toward what we're focused on this fiscal year in 2526, we have four important focus areas. And I will say these focus areas are intentional. They are intended to complement the city's economic development plans and designed to support our mission of, of really trying to foster a vibrant local economy and community. So in the first area, we can go to the next slide, which is focused on business attraction and retention. And I'm not going to go through all of the things on the list here. You have the work plan in your packet. We want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make San Mateo a place where businesses want to start, where they want to grow, where they want to expand. And we do this by providing high value business development services. These are all of the things that you might think of when you think of San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce, you know, workshops, one-on-one mentoring, networking opportunities, ribbon cuttings. We also want to make sure we're paying attention and providing support to women owned, minority owned, our age friendly businesses and helping promote those important businesses and connecting them with resources as needed. New activities in this area that I'll highlight is to make sure that we're doing all that we can to be welcoming to new businesses. So we're really looking forward to working more closely with the city on how we welcome and onboard businesses from the point they're seeking license and beyond. And at the other end of the continuum, we also want to work more closely with the city to ensure we have a shared kind of early warning approach to identify and support businesses that might be considering relocating or closing. Then our place focus strategy, we will continue to look at targeted business district activation. And we'll do that by collaborating with the city and the DSMA on downtown planning, events and programs. We know the downtown specific plan will be happening in 2026. And we want to make sure our businesses and our members are engaged in that process. We want to continue to support the 25th Avenue Collective and explore additional opportunities to strengthen their impact. You'll notice the lovely picture. It was a little dark. Yes, the photo was dark. We need more lighting. So we're going to be working on improved lighting for Winter Wonder Walk this year. We've also been involved in the Bridgepoint Shopping Center, have done some nice ribbon cuttings for businesses there and will soon be doing one for Benihana. We've fostered new relationships with the new property managers at Marina Plaza and have had some early conversations with a local Realtor, also a Best of winner and president of the Shoreview Parkside Neighborhood Association about what we can do in East San Mateo. So it sounds like a lot. There's more work to be done for sure. And we've thought about what else might we do to support targeted business district activation? And we made that a topic at our board retreat. And we asked our board members, what's a favorite city for you? And it was really interesting what came up. One board member had just returned from travels to Japan and said, they have these great, they have great signage in their business districts and they have these great art installations. And they're not just art installations, but they're opportunities for selfies. And people then can post. So there's an engagement mechanism that's built in. So that got us excited about what might we do to support public art and placemaking in a few key areas. Civic engagement and workforce, as I said before, we can't do economic development, community development without investing in people. So we'll be busy focused on building a community service project opportunity for leadership alumni, including those who just completed Lead Forward. We'll be doing that with Samaritan House with the goal of having positive impact for San Mateo. We'll be launching the next Lead Forward cohort in the first quarter of 2026. And we're pleased that we can offer four complimentary seats to the city of San Mateo and along with that 12 executive coaching sessions. And I'm excited that we'll be looking to plan and host a job fair and a career day for local youth and getting them excited about ways that they can support businesses here in San Mateo. Okay, we're getting to the end. Fourth focus area is our work to bring stakeholders together, to understand issues and push for change that enables economic growth and enhances our quality of life. We have launched a developer roundtable with for-profit and nonprofit developers that have already come together twice and they'll be meeting again this Wednesday. And really working together on how do we want to grow and develop as a city? The general plan provides a great framework. We're wanting to better understand what's working in terms of process and where are some of the bottlenecks? How can we work together to make improvements and change? So those conversations have been very productive. Looking forward to also playing a role to bring together some of the larger businesses and employers in San Mateo to get their input and guidance on the economic development plan that I know will be coming before you in a couple of weeks. Finally, it's been nice to be able to get together with chamber executives here on the peninsula. We've talked about the fact that we're not San Francisco. We've talked about the fact that we're not San Francisco and we're not San Jose, but we don't want to be the pass-through or the pass-by peninsula. So how can we join together to think about making our cities and communities a destination? And looking to how we can leverage the opportunities that are going to come with next year's major sporting events, the Super Bowl and the World Cup Games. So I am on the last slide here. I told you, you got two doses of September Fest, so this is highlights from what happened just a little over a week ago. Thought we had a great crowd in spite of the gray weather, and we've been hearing anecdotes from participants and exhibitors that they thought the crowd was actually larger this year. And got a great quote from one of our local businesses who said, lots of interest at my booth and scores of good leads. This is what we love hearing, right? Because we talk about it as something we want to showcase our great businesses. I already have one new client, one who's interested in signing up after the new year, and four others coming in to check it out in the next couple of weeks. This is big for me. So that's one business's story. We did a lot this year to really make sure. We had plenty of kids' activities, hands-on activities, had some great organizations that joined us. We did a scavenger hunt last year, did it again this year, and we had Mateo the Fox show up, which was real fun. And then our mural madness, we had nine local artists competing in real time to design murals, the winner of which would have an opportunity to replicate that mural on a business downtown. Over 300 votes were cast. We're excited about that, and we'll be announcing the winner later this week. A board member asked me, you know, Erica, how do you look at success of an event like this? And I said, well, there's the foot traffic, attendance, there's how many sponsors we bring in, did we, you know, raise enough money to cover cost? But there was one point during the day where I looked out, and it happened to be when we had a group of people that were line dancing with Lisa. This was another, a first, and our very own mayor, yes, he was spotted line dancing. And I just saw the smiles and the energy and the crowd, and I thought, you know, this is the very best of what can happen when a community comes together. And I just feel very privileged to have had an opportunity to play a part in making that happen. So with that, I am done and look forward to comments and questions.
All right, we'll open it up to council. Oh, wait, sorry. Before we do, we need to open it up for public comment. Are there any requests for public comment on this?
Yes, we do have a number of requests to speak. If you do wish to speak on this item and you're participating in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. If you are in person, please provide me with the request to speak. We will be closing the request to speak period now. We do have a total of one request to speak in chambers and three requests to speak on this item virtually. That is a total of four requests per our rules and procedures. That will set the limit to three minutes per speaker.
Very good.
We'll start with our speaker in chambers, following by our speakers in the remote environment. The last speaker will be Ilya Frangos. Our first speaker in chambers will be Pauline Chung.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom, City Council and staff. My name is Pauline Chung. I've been with the San Mateo Area Chamber for 10 years, and in my current role as Director of Member Outreach and Engagement for two and a half. My time with the chamber actually started when I was a member of the chamber, and I looked around for what chamber to join because I wanted an active one. And I landed in San Mateo, although I'm a resident of Foster City. So I began volunteering with the chamber because I believed in what the chamber offered, and I enjoyed meeting, do people, helping out where I could and making, connecting people. So then I started working part-time, then somehow became a full-time employee. Last year, we launched a new membership package program, and then since that time, we have nearly 100 Look and Learn members. That's our introductory package that we launched last year. So we offer promotion opportunities to members of the chamber via our chamber newsletter or on social media to help boost member visibility. We reach out to the businesses who are interested in open houses, grand openings, ribbon cuttings for a brand-new business, or celebrating a milestone year in their business. We all know that running a business can be lonely, and we've heard from members through past surveys that they want opportunities for connection and networking. I organize monthly Business After Hours, I call them BAHs, networking events, which have gained so much popularity that I'm actually booking into next year now. Over 600 registrations have been made so far this year, and I sometimes collaborate with other chambers for some of these events. So that's an opportunity to bring in a different population into the networking mix. My goal each year is to host at least 10 of these Business After Hours. It's looking like I might hit the lucky 13 this year. Our two signature events, the Best of San Mateo Area Awards and the San Mateo Arts and Culture Fest are huge outreach efforts to current members and non-members who are community-minded, and they want to help support and participate in these efforts. These events held multiple years successfully have really helped boost chamber recognition, thus, membership. We pride ourselves in offering friendly and responsive service. I often pick up the phone and the person on the other end is shocked that they have a real-life person answering the call. And then they follow up telling me that I've called such-and-such chamber and nobody ever answers. So I feel really good about that. And we are very pleased that we hear from businesses that say, the reason they chose us is because we are active and we care about their needs.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, in our virtual environment, is Roe V. Lynn Antonio, followed by Mackenzie.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is Roe V. Lynn Antonio. I serve as the senior vice president of Local Public Affairs with the California Apartment Association. But I am honored to serve as a board of directors for the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce, where I also play a dual role and co-chair for the Public Policy and Government Affairs Committee. Tonight, I'm here to support the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce and share a few words about the important work of our wonderful organization. I joined the board and the chamber a little bit over five years ago, and I've seen firsthand how the chamber has grown, becoming more impactful, more inclusive, and more focused on deserving the needs of our community. We have over 350 members, and we're committed to creating meaningful connections, hosting intentional events, and strengthening partnerships throughout the region. One of the most rewarding developments has been the increased engagement of our board and members leaning in to support and advance the chamber's mission. Our Public Policy Committee meets monthly to address key local public policy issues that affect our community. It's very, it's strong, it's well-attended, and we have so many issues ranging from housing, transportation, to current events. We've taken strong positions on local initiatives that align with our values and mission, including endorsements of Measure T last year, which we all recognize as a priority of the city. We are proud of the role that we play in advocating for a thriving, balanced, and forward-looking San Mateo. And this is done with the hard work of a dedicated and committed two-person team. Looking at Erica's presentations and all the deliverables, you would think we have an army of staff that are moving these forward, but we don't. We've got our CEO, chamber, Erica's doing a great job, and Pauline, who is such a busy worker bee with the chamber. So I wanted to recognize both of them, and thank you again, City Council, for your support in this chamber.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mackenzie.
My name is Mackenzie Jacobic. I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown San Mateo Association. I'm happy to speak in support of the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce today. I've had the pleasure of working with Erica, Pauline, and several of their board members on projects that lift up businesses in downtown San Mateo and beyond. The chamber is an invaluable partner in strengthening our local economy, connecting businesses of all sizes, and fostering collaboration among community organizations. This year, the DSMA partnered with the chamber, as well as the county's Office of Arts and Culture, on the September Arts and Culture Fest. I saw firsthand the chamber's attention to detail, thoughtful planning, and their consistent focus on how the event would benefit the city, the community, and local businesses. We're now gearing up for the third annual Shop Small to Win Big campaign, and I'm excited once again to partner with the chamber. When our organizations work together, our efforts are amplified, our reach is broader, and the impact on the business community is greater. I'm very grateful for the chamber's leadership, collaborative spirit, and commitment to helping San Mateo's business community thrive. I encourage the council to recognize the important role they play in making our city stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Ilya Frangos.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I have a video, but I don't know if you guys allow video, so. In any case, good evening, everyone. My name is Ilya Frangos. I'm a partner at Galen Fry Fitting and Frangos, and we're a personal injury law firm located here in San Mateo. And I'm just here tonight to speak briefly in support of the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce and the important role that it plays in our local economy and business community. Our firm has been a proud chamber member since 2015, and we joined back then because we believe and continue to believe in the chamber's mission, which is promoting the economic vitality and supporting local businesses and fostering connections and strengthening our community. Many of the people at our firm live here, we all work here, and we really think it's important to support the local community and local businesses here. You know, one of the ways that the chamber has made a real impact is by recognizing and uplifting local businesses. And one of the ways that it has done that is through their Best of San Mateo Area Award. Our firm is very proud that we've been awarded this area for attorneys the past two years, and it's meant a lot to us in a time when there's a lot of advertisements and different things for law firms and attorneys that really don't have an interest in the San Mateo County area or San Mateo community. It allows us to stand apart from those other businesses to show that we are invested and we care, and we want to make a difference for everyone that lives in our county and in our city. We recently partnered with the chamber to host the Business After Hours. I've been in our office, and it was really incredible opportunity for local business owners and other professionals to come together, make connections. We all had a great time, but more importantly, we all got to meet each other, and we were all invested in each other's businesses and business opportunities. And this is the kind of work, connecting all the different folks in San Mateo and their businesses, so that we can support each other, so that we can all continue to thrive and make San Mateo and just our city and our county one of the best places to live. So in closing, I have a lot more that I could say, but I already talked too much as it is. Just grateful for the work the chamber does to keep San Mateo's business community engaged, connected, and thank the council for your continued support of the local economic development initiatives like this one. And this is my first time speaking before all of you, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Through the mayor, that concludes public comment.
Very good. And we will close public comment and open it to questions, comments, and feedback from the council. I will let Councilmember Sworko Kadiki go first.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you to everybody in the chamber who's working so hard behind the scenes. Just a couple questions. When a new business comes to San Mateo, what is the practice that we're taking to engage with those new businesses and also retain them here?
So that is a great question. If they call us, we immediately go into the services that we can provide and listen to what their needs are in coming here and starting here, and do our best to make sure our services are addressing those needs. I will be honest and say that we don't always know when we have a new business on the scene. And one of the things that we have talked about is, can we get a list of new business licensees? So at the very moment we know they are going through that process, we can do a warm, friendly welcome and say, we're here, these are the kinds of supports that we can provide if you, if you should need them.
Okay, great, thank you. And then 2026 is a unique year, and I know it's not just on the chamber, it's the city as well, and partnership with DSMA and others, but the Super Bowl is going to be in the Bay Area, as well as the World Cup will be hosted around North America. And so I'm just curious what our plans are in order to kind of generate revenue and also driving, you know, marketing and folks to San Mateo. I know that's coming up really quickly, and I would like to see a concerted effort and a plan there.
So we are, I mentioned, meeting pretty regularly with other chamber executives and the SF Peninsula that is an affiliate partner with the Bay Area Host Committee, and have started conversations in earnest about what we can do together, and also thinking about what can be done within our respective city. So it's, it's early stage. I know the clock is ticking. Minimally, what the chamber would like to be able to do is get a playbook and a resource guide out to our members and local businesses to say, hey, here's some things you can do to take advantage of the increased foot traffic, whether that's offering a special drink or a special menu or a smaller viewing party. Here's some tips and, and support that we can provide to enable you to do that.
And then I would just add that we have already met once, and we've made it a part of our standing agenda. We have partnership meetings with the city, the chamber, and the DSMA to see where we can gain synergy and find ways to partner, and that is one, one of our agenda items. And so we're looking at what are our opportunities, and also in light of what our limitations might be, so that we can capitalize on our opportunities in light of those limitations to attract folks for those events and to focus our energies where they're going to be most effective, including looking at our special events and how we can streamline those to get in front of the ones that might be coming specifically for these particular event opportunities, and how we can streamline that and get things out the door, and how the timing might interact with those events.
And then I know the NFL requires licensing fees for streaming rights, but, you know, a vision that I would have for the city is that perhaps we would host some kind of streaming event and invest, because even a small investment into something like that could pay off dividends. And so I'm just, would love to see some kind of out-of-the-box solutions, and really relatively quickly, just given we're getting close to the end of the year. And there's a lot of potential. If you look at historically, these types of large sporting events, like the World Cup is over a month, they do tend to help really increase value for, for cities and for businesses. So, thank you.
Okay, before we go to the next person, we are coming up on seven o'clock. Lisa, how many, how many minutes do you think you need to? Are you going to ask questions, comments? You're muted.
Whoops, hi. Excuse me, I, I can use, I'll do a minute.
Okay, so we're going to extend the meeting for 10 minutes till 7:10, and I'm going to let Nicole Fernandez go next. Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Erica, for a really comprehensive presentation. I, I am amazed, continually amazed at the work that you do, just given how big San Mateo is and the limited resources that we have in the community. So thank you. My question was specifically regarding the Lead Forward program. This is a unique time with what's going on in the city right now, and I just wanted to find out about, you're asking for $90,000, about how much of that money would go towards the Lead Forward program?
So historically, the allocation has been So historically, the allocation has been about $20,000. It doesn't need to stay that way going forward, but that has been the allocation and I think that's what was noted in the administrative report that you all received.
So for me, I really feel like this is, we're, the city is suffering from a major deficit and it feels in some ways that perhaps the Lead Forward Program is not core to the mission of the chamber. At least for me, it feels like it might be a really awesome opportunity, but just given how deep, how much we're depending on resetting and really delivering the core services of the chamber, I don't necessarily know that I would be supportive of the full 20K going to the Lead Forward Program if there would be willing, if there would be some negotiation about, and I don't know where my colleagues stand on this, I haven't, but it does not feel like that's core to the chamber functions right now. And so I do have some concerns about that amount of money going to a select three-day event that may not be core to the mission of the chamber right now. And that's just my take. Thank you.
Councilmember Diaz Nash.
All right, thank you very much. I'll be very quick. Thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone all around. What I want to focus on is I think the chamber and the partnerships it has made have become so much more effective this year, both in terms of helping businesses, small and large, as well as helping our community grow. I would really want to commend you on your focus on data because that's how we make decisions and that's how we know that our money is being well-invested in partnership and lots of examples. I would really cite the Best of San Mateo as the top of the top. In terms of going forward, I would really encourage the chamber to be even more of a leader when it comes to economic development, the business roundtables. There is so much we have to do and our city is growing and the chamber needs to be out there being our eyes and ears and a real leader in this area. So I look forward to not only what you're doing so far, but what you're going to do going forward. And then in terms of what Councilmember Fernandez talked about, I know there's been tremendous rethinking of the leadership event and I would just counsel that we do it one more year and really focus on evaluating, you know, asking the question that Councilmember Fernandez has asked, what is the role of this event in the chamber's overall mission? Because I think it does a lot of tremendously good things, but I think we should come back next year and really have a specific focus on that. But I would support continuing it again this year, but really focusing on what, you know, what the chamber can do, also in terms of early warning. So do more of what you're doing, doing even more of it, and thank you very much to the mighty team that has done so much.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you through the mayor. I generally echo what my colleagues have said. I appreciate the presentation. I did have a quick question or two to continue the conversation about Lead Forward a moment. I was just curious, with the $20,000 investment, was that what had been in the work plan in previous years? Okay. And do, did we have, sorry?
I just was mentioning that in the past, we got two staff members that were sent with the $20,000 and now we have four.
Yep, thank you. I was just curious if we had, I think I saw Martin in the picture, was that the latest cohort and how, who from the city, thank you, who from the city participated?
So it was Zach Dahl and Martin.
Oh, yeah, Zach, yeah, great. And do we, have you opened registration for the upcoming cohort yet?
No, not yet.
Okay. Great. I think, I think I generally agree with Councilmember Diaz Nash on this. I appreciate the interest in getting a sense of whether, how the city's investment is being spent. And so I generally think, I think I would agree in the idea of going ahead with what I think is the plan this upcoming year. I would like to learn more as well with everybody about how Lead Forward is going. I guess I will just mention and highlight too that there is another organization that has a leadership program and has been interested in receiving contributions. And so I think in that broader discussion that the council plans to have later on how to treat other organizations that are offering programs and services and seeking partnership with the city, that it would be good to make sure we talk about Lead Forward and everything again next year. But thank you for all you do. Of course, I think people have mentioned generally, your impact is felt greatly and I'm very appreciative for all you are doing.
Just a few questions. I think I am in agreement with the Lead Forward Program of giving it one more year. I think there's some potential for it to, if we kept it local, we would be spending local. And so that might be something to look at going forward is if we could have it be days that are, you know, you go home at night, but you're here local and you're eating local and you have the venue move every day, which would be supporting local businesses. So that's my thought on that. And I think, you know, we should do it for one more year and then really reevaluate and see what we're getting out of it and make sure it's core to your mission. A couple of other things, and you and I have talked about this, Erica, the last couple of weeks, but I was curious, of the 250 to 320 Best of Business and Awards, how many of them are we seeing, or how many of them are chamber members? And then how much conversion are we seeing to becoming members once they've won the award?
Yeah, to clarify that, 250 to 320 was the number of visitors that we had to the website, the Best of website. We had over 100 winners and I'm looking at, Pauline, would you say half were chamber Around half, yeah. Yeah, and, yeah, and last year was the inaugural year. We had plans and visions of grandeur in terms of converting every winner to becoming a chamber member. That didn't quite prove to be the case, so this year we've had more of a strategy in reaching out right away and starting that conversion process because it's a huge, it's a huge opportunity.
Huge pool, you know, and, okay, that's great. Actually, for the city manager question, new business licenses, is that a matter of public record? Meaning, is that something that once every week we could provide to the chamber?
So it is public record, but once every week might be pretty daunting, but we can look, I'm taking back that suggestion, that's something we can look at moving forward.
Be great, thank you. Have we identified who the 10 largest companies are within San Mateo and how many of them are members?
So we can get the 10 largest companies and I want to say at least two of them are members, the College of San Mateo Mills Peninsula Medical Center.
Okay. Be a great thing to do as well is to, you know, work with the city to get that list of 10 or 20 and continue to try to work them in. Obviously, bigger companies have more money that they can contribute to something like this. Great. I love all the ideas about public art and I think we should continue to work with that. Also, we have had a number of companies and businesses both open and relocate, open and also close and relocate in the last year. And so I hope that we are doing some post-mortem with them, particularly if they are members of the chamber and coming back and saying, you know, what went wrong and what could we do differently in their way, we as a city and the chamber can support them and vice, and then use that to help our existing chamber members. All in all, I think the Chamber of Commerce is doing a fantastic job, so keep up the great work and those are all my comments. Anybody else have anything else before we call it? Okay, well then we will close this closed session or open, we'll close the special meeting and move on to our regular council meeting in five minutes. Thanks. Bye.